Let's get to know these four candidates. Two people are running for the District E seat currently held by Jen Cher. Those candidates are Stephen Foshen and Katherine Kullenberg. Two candidates are running for the District A seat currently held by Jen Rupert. Those candidates are Chase McWhorter and Kenny Tietler. Okay, so let's get to introductions. You'll each have two minutes and we're going to start in alphabetical order, which means Stephen goes first with his statement, so I will read that. Oh, here it is. Okay, I'm going to read this on behalf of Stephen Foshen. "I am a father of four, three Aspen High graduates, one currently in private school, about to enter Basalt High School, and I myself, a product of public school, be it a long time and many curriculums ago. I am a 30-plus-year Valley resident, a business owner, general contractor, life and wellness coach, and competitive athlete. I decided to run for school board after much thought and deliberation, due to the current climate of the world and, more importantly, the dismal state of education. It is my belief that in order to provide the best possible education for all students, a balanced input is required. What that means to me is that parents, educators, faculty, and government cooperating together is in the best interest of the student. I don't currently believe this is happening. It is my opinion..." I might go a little longer with this one. This is his only chance, this is... But, thank you. "I don't currently believe this is happening. It is my opinion that a parent should be on the school board, as they are the most invested in the student's future, not just a 12- to 18-year obligation, but a lifetime commitment." There is an enormous difference here. "I would like to provide myself as a conduit between parents and the school board. Given the opportunity, I will lend my very reasonable voice and ears to that cause. My opponent, Katherine, is certainly more versed for this position, although I don't think of her as an opponent, more your other option, as we both want the same things, and that is to do better for the students of this Valley. I can tell you from experience, though not as a litigator or educator, but as a businessman, solving problems takes action. I would like to offer a different perspective, a fresh set of eyes, and perhaps new ideas, perhaps something outside the box, not thought of by those inside the box. I will bring a businessman and parent's perspective to the issues the school board faces, and there are many, all of which will require strong resolve, compassion, and a considerable amount of effort to find and execute the solutions. Implementing solutions takes action and ownership. The path can always be changed, as long as the destination remains the same. Course correction is constant. In order to make progress, you must be willing to take action, that destination being a bright future for all students through the best education possible. Thank you for your time and listening. I respectfully ask for your vote to be put on the school board to provide insight as well as oversight of what is happening within our schools. Stephen Foshen." Okay, next up is Katherine. Please introduce yourself briefly, two minutes. Tell us some biographical information about yourself and include your specific experience with the school district.
Sure. So, my name's Katherine Kullenberg. I live in Basalt and I have three kids. My oldest daughter is almost seven and she is in first grade. I have a son who's five who wants our kindergarten next year, and a daughter who just turned two. So, I'm looking at about 17 more years in our public schools. So, as a parent, I think that I have a very good reason to want to be involved. Beyond that, though, personally, education is a passion of mine. I am an educator. I own and operate a preschool in Aspen. It is a private preschool, so from a business perspective, I'm also a business owner, so I bring those qualities as well. And then, my formal education is very well-suited to this position. I have a self-designed major in education policy and as well as a major in psychology with a focus on the child. And then, I've worked in a public school as a preschool special educator and child find coordinator, and then went back to law school, where I also received a letter recognizing that I focused on education policy. And while there, I worked for the U.S. Department of Education for an organization called Disability Rights Washington. I served through our legal clinic on a team that actually sued a school district. So, really, I've come at education from every possible angle, I think, and now having kids in the system has made me really want to get involved and offer my education, my experience, my expertise to our district. I want our district to be the best that it can be, and I think I have a thorough understanding of some of the background and what that takes, and I think that what I have to offer is valuable, and so I respectfully ask for your vote this fall, and I would love to serve our district in this way.
Thanks, Katherine. Chase, you're next. Chase McWhorter.
Thank you, everybody, for having us here. Similar to Katherine, I have young kids entering the school district. I would say that probably is what prompted my decision to run for the school board, just at a high level. Personal background, I come from more of a business background, working in finance, specifically infrastructure and real estate, private equity. So, I think this gives me a unique perspective specifically on board functions and how oversight should and can look. I would take probably a more fiduciary standard kind of look at operating on a board, which I think whether corporate, bureaucracy, whatever it might be, that's kind of the function of a board, to provide oversight and guidance, let managers manage, teachers teach. Board's supposed to provide oversight. So, that would be my perspective. More background, education-wise, I graduated with a bachelor's degree in public policy, planning and development from the University of Southern California, and I've used that professionally. I think the biggest thing when it comes to education, as Katherine's saying, being a passion of hers, I've, I would say, a family view is that education is not supposed to stop, and I think that's an important thing when it comes to schools, is it's fostering that you want to keep learning after. So, that's a big, a big thing for me, is teaching kids how to think and to love to think. And then, I would say, you know, I'll stop there because I think my time's almost up, but...
Thank you. Kenny Tietler, you're next.
Hi, my name is Kenny Tietler. I am beginning my 29th year in the Roaring Fork Valley. I moved here in 1993 for a job at Basalt Elementary School. I taught there for 12 years. As a teacher there, I was an ESL teacher, a Spanish teacher, but I spent the majority of my time teaching in the bilingual program there as a bilingual classroom teacher. I taught second through fourth grade, and then, at the end of my time there, I taught reading in kindergarten and first grade. Then, I moved back down here to Carbondale, and I taught 14 years here in Carbondale. The first eight years was at Crystal River Elementary School, where I was a classroom teacher. I spent about half of my time of that time, again, teaching in a bilingual classroom. And my last six years, I was at Carbondale Middle School, where I taught English as a second language and math. In addition, a connection that I have to the school is I have two daughters who recently graduated from the Roaring Fork School Systems. They went pre-K through 12th grade here in the Roaring Fork School System. And so, having two daughters who went through the system, I have that parent perspective of what it takes to understand how the school operates, and the fact that my children aren't in school currently will allow me to look at it from an objective point of view, and I will be wanting to support all kids and not necessarily looking at what is best for my children. My wife has also spent her career in education. She was an early childhood advocate, and she worked in the Roaring Fork School District for about her last 10 years. Currently, I am teaching a few nights a week at Colorado Mountain College, a GED program there, and I'm also a pre-collegiate mentor for the Roaring Fork School District. I have a group of 10 ninth graders that I work who are first-time college-bound students, and so that is mostly my connection here to the community.
Great. Thank you all so much. Our next section is opening remarks, so there might be a little overlap here, but each of you will have two minutes. Chase, you'll go first. Please tell us why you're running for the board, what qualifies you, and what strengths and qualities you would bring to this role?
Yeah, there is a lot of overlap with that. No, I think it goes back to having, having young kids entering the school district. I think that probably is foundational to the decision to run for the board. I would say that qualifications, looking at that, I probably take a, obviously, an outside perspective, not having come from working in the education system, but I think the qualification of any board, whether it's corporate, educational, I mean, the function of a board is oversight. You look at a corporate board, I mean, JP Morgan, they have tax auditors, they have people that worked in tech. The idea is that you want different perspectives, usually when you're, you're working on a board, because the, the things that I think the board is supposed to address don't necessarily fall within just the normal day-to-day operations. It's oversight, guidance, things like that. So, I think that's where my qualifications, I have background providing oversight, financial due diligence, operational due diligence, working with organizations to improve efficiencies. So, I think that's probably the, the key qualification, is just experience in general, working with and on boards. So, that's probably the mindset that I would take with this. I mean, obviously, you're adding a layer with education, but I think some of the core principles are overlap, whatever type of board it is, so...
Great, thank you. Kenny, you're next. What qualifies you? What strengths and qualities do you bring to this role?
During my time teaching in the district, I always wondered to myself, why has there never been a teacher on the school board in my time here? And I, when I retired from teaching and I found that this seat was coming open, I decided it was time to put my talk to the test, and I decided this would be a great opportunity for me to use my educational experience, my understanding of how the school board interacts with the teachers and how the teachers interact with the children, and be able to bring a teacher's perspective to the school board, which will be ultimately benefit towards the children. During my time working, I worked heavily within, with the population of our second-language learners here. Our school district is a 55% Latino, and I have dedicated my time working to this population. I think it's amazing that Natalie and Jasmine are on the board now that can bring this perspective, but I think it is an underrepresented population that I can help represent. I have a degree in culture and linguistic diversity, with a master's degree in reading for second-language learners, and being able to use those skills that I have, I'll be able to help the board understand what it is that works well in the classroom, what it is that the teachers need, which will in turn benefit the children. I've had a lot of experience working with district accountability boards, school accountability boards. I've been on curriculum committees in math, English as a second language, language arts. I understand how these strategic planning interact with the experience that I've had and how to identify educational priorities, which is a position that we need to do on the board. I've also have work in updating policy, and I understand how to connect what's happening in the schools, whether it be analyzing data or looking at budgets, which I've had experience doing for our school district. So, that's what I want to bring to the board.
Great, thank you. That's our timer. Katherine, you're next.
So, initially, why I'm running for the board was I was lobbied by some, some friends, some neighbors, to throw my hat in the ring for this position. And as I told you, my oldest daughter's seven, so she's just in first grade, and I'm really just starting to get into what's going on at Roaring Fork, getting my feet wet, understanding everything that's happening here. But as I've done this and talked to more people and, and become more involved, I've seen that some of the qualities that I have and some of the tools that I've used could be very effective in this role. And so, why I'm running for the board is, you know, multi-pronged. I think that I want to serve our community. Like I told you, right off the bat, I have a lifelong passion for education and for children, and as a college student, I used to always think, maybe one day I'll sit on a school board. So, this has always been something that I've been interested in, and it's also a marriage of my, my experience in law and, and in business. So, I, I run a business, and so I understand things from that perspective. I balance a pretty healthy budget at any given time. I have about 60 families enrolled at my current school. Nothing compared to what the school district is, but I at least have some solid understanding there. And then, having the experience being a litigator, practicing litigator for three years, I was in some tricky, sticky situations where you really had to work through several things. I see some of the issues that our community has right now with the school board. I've talked to a wide range of community members, and I feel like I can help to bridge that gap in some ways and also bring a fair amount of, of experience to the role.
Great, thank you. Our next question is about collaborative problem-solving, and Kenny, you'll go first. Please describe a time when you've worked with a group to address a problem where you had to reach consensus, knowing that everyone's needs and requests would not all be met.
When you talk about reaching consensus, I think it is important in reaching consensus to be a good listener. I think that's where it all starts with, that you need to listen deeply, you need to ask clarifying questions, and you need to seek understanding. And so, I can tell you a time where I was in that situation. I was teaching, and a parent approached me and asked me if they could help with a situation they were having where their child was experiencing bullying at the school. And my first response to her was to say, well, have you talked to our principal about this? And she said that she did not feel comfortable talking to the principal. She's heard from some other parents who had talked to the principal, and that she didn't feel like she would get what she needed by talking to the principal. And I talked to her and asked more specifically, like, was this firsthand information? And she mentioned about how it was like second or third-hand information, and I think it's so important to make sure that you are talking to the person that you need something from. And so, I helped arrange the meeting, and I said, well, would you be willing to meet with the principal? And she mentioned that if I was there to support her and if I could translate for her, that she would be willing to come and talk to the principal. And she said she has a group of friends who wanted to be in that meeting too, because they were having the same experiences. So, we made a meeting with the principals, and it turned out to be a very good meeting. There was some misunderstanding, and I think that's where it comes from with communication and from people who are seeing things from a different point of view. You just need to make sure that you're communicating openly, without any hidden agenda, and by talking and bringing the group together, they were able to come to some type of accord. It wasn't exactly what they all wanted, but they figured out a schedule where they could be on the playground to help supervise, and then they continued to meet for weeks after that together. And so, I think it's just making sure we're good listeners, and that's something I feel like I would bring to the board. I would ask those clarifying questions and I would be, seek understanding.
Great, thank you. Katherine, you're next.
Sure. So, when I first looked at this question, I felt like I had a ton of answers to this. So, when I was practicing law, I was litigating, like I said, so almost every single case resolved itself through mediation or through collaboration, and both parties were unhappy. So, that was a very formal experience of this. Where I am now and what I'm doing now, as I said, I, I run a preschool, I also teach in the classrooms. It's a profession that's highly dominated by women, and I'm in a building with two other programs, and so we are constantly having to work out issues amongst the three programs and amongst the teachers. And it's really important when you are in this situation that you're approachable, one, because if you're not approachable, that shuts people down right away. Two, that you are listening, that you're truly listening and understanding what the other person is saying. And so, I've been in these problems where I've had to kind of be the overseer among my staff members, but also been involved with them myself. And you also have to set the tone from the beginning, that we're in this situation, and the result that we come to isn't going to be fully acceptable to me, it's not going to be fully acceptable to you, but we need to come to a compromise and we need to look at what our ultimate goal is, and that's to resolve this issue. And so, I think that I bring a lot of experience on this front, and I think, again, that I can, I can bring some of those skills that I've, I've gained from my other roles into this role.
Thank you. Chase, you're next.
Yeah, I was, I would say, one of the, something that had a big impact on me professionally and just in life, actually, is a book, Getting to Yes, really comprehensive study about principle-based, whether it's negotiations or trying to come to general agreement, kind of finding root, root issues rather than haggling about different things at the top. So, that's been something that's impacted me my whole life. I look at this question, I kind of laughed to myself, just having a, a four-year-old that's kind of fiery. It's every day of your life is trying to come to consensus on the simplest things. But I would say that a good example, maybe in kind of relevant timing-wise and to a board, is I look at our local HOA board, which I'm, I became a part of in the last year as well, where you're discussing things with a community of people that have different needs, different wants, and there was a debate about adding something to, to the community, taking the more finance auditor, bad guy perspective. I didn't think that was a good idea. It could definitely make, yeah, for a more beautiful community, but I have concerns about wanting to have reserves and take care of other things, like a roof maybe, at some point, which eventually we did have to take care of. So, that obviously made some people upset. I probably would have benefited the most because there'd been an open green area where my kids could have gone and ran around, and it would have been great, but I took the more long-term approach, and again, the whole idea of nobody's really happy on both sides, it's kind of, you just have to sometimes make those decisions. So, that'd be the most relevant, I guess, timing-wise.
Great, thank you. Okay, our next segment are the school-community questions. The district asked parents, students, teachers, and community members to submit questions to the candidates. So, after compiling all the questions, they represent five themes. So, we'll have at least one question from each of the following themes: teacher pay and retention strategies, equity, inclusion, and belonging, transparency and accountability, and communication with parents and family engagement, and management of COVID. So, our first question is related to teacher pay and retention strategies. Katherine, you'll go first. What strategies do you believe will retain and attract highly effective teachers and other school staff?
So, I think, again, we're looking at two, two things here. Being an employer and hiring teachers and employees myself, I understand the importance of the culture and the importance of valuing your educators and your teachers and giving them an opportunity to take ownership of their classrooms and really feeling that. Because without taking ownership, you don't absorb the positives or the negatives. If you don't have ownership, the result isn't on you. So, I really think that we need to start by figuring out where the issues are and if there are issues. You know, talking to community members, I've heard some issues, some teachers have been unwilling to speak to me, so I think it's, it's really getting in there and figuring out what the board's done, where things are right now and where they stand. And then, it's moving forward. It's figuring out how to resolve those issues in the best way and how to meet the needs of the teachers. It's, the second question under this, I think, is the other big piece, and that's pay. Our teachers, the pay for the teachers in our district is not comparable to what they can get by driving 20 minutes up to Aspen, by working at Country Day, by going to these other schools, and that has to be resolved, and that's only going to be resolved if we can pass the mill levy. And it's important. Teachers, part of feeling valued is feeling valued by your administrator, by your students, by your parents. Another part is being paid for what you're doing, and we need to be treating these teachers as the professionals that they are and compensating them accordingly. So, those are my, my biggest thoughts on that.
Great, thank you. Chase, you're next.
Yeah, I would definitely piggyback on what Katherine said. I don't think, any industry, it all comes down to pay. I mean, you can think of plenty of jobs where you could get a lot of money and you'd be miserable. So, my view is, yeah, I think there would be other factors at play. I think this is where having communication directly with teachers is probably one of the most important things, is understanding what issues there are. If it all comes down to pay, then you can identify that and zero in on it. I think when it comes to, to the mill levy, and I said this on Monday at another forum we were at, I'd say my general philosophy is not supporting tax increases until you've exhausted cost cuts, things like that. But when it comes to the mill levy, I'd say the, the main thing that I've, I've warned against is, I don't foresee, coming from the finance world, I, I don't think cost of living is going to, to come down enough to even support what we're anticipating for the mill levy. So, that would be my biggest warning, is I think you're going to see a higher cost of living. You look at energy prices, this is where I think siloing something just based on purely the pay right now, I think is a flawed approach. So, I do think you have to prepare for kind of the worst and still do cost cuts, still look at increasing teacher pay through the mill levy, all of those types of things. I think that's, that's a bigger concern, is will it be enough? And how will you adapt if it's not? Because that is a serious reality we're entering right now. So...
Thank you. Kenny, you're next.
Well, I too will agree with what Katherine said. That rang true to me was making sure that you have a culture and environment that makes people want to be there. I think that is the most important thing that you can give to the teachers, is that place that they want to be working at the school. Yes, pay is a difficult time, and we're going to be answering a question that's talking about what we think about 5B, and I will talk more about the pay aspect of that when we get there. But to me, it is that environment that you build with your students and, but especially with the culture that you have within the school. So, the thing that teachers seem to have a difficult time with within the classroom is that they are valued, and especially that their time is valued. So, I want to make sure on the board that I am making sure that the teachers are feeling valued in their school. We do, the school district does these annual surveys where they survey staff and children and the community, and one of these, in the 2019 survey, 32% of the staff said that professional development is not differentiated to meet their needs. And I know as a teacher, time is your number-one thing that you need to make sure is valued. And so, one thing I would be able to do is have that perspective of a teacher and making sure that things that we're asking the teachers to do is valued and that we're not putting more and more on the teachers' plates where it makes it more and more difficult for them to do their job. We have, half of our teachers in our district have been with our district for five years or less. We need to be, build longevity with our teachers so that that experience can help the children do better academically, emotionally. Experienced teachers are going to give more to their children, and so I just think we need to make sure that we're building that culture and environment where we're valuing time especially for the teachers.
Thank you. Our next question is about the mill levy, and Chase, you're going first. Are you in favor of the mill levy override and why?
Like I said previously, I'd say, again, my general philosophy is not to support tax increases until you can show that you've exhausted cost cuts. With that said, I completely empathize with the cost of living here, the pay keeping up with where it should. So, I would say in this instance, I would put a, a string attached to it, that supporting it, assuming that if elected to the board, that you would have the ability to provide very in-depth oversight. I know 75% is dedicated to teachers, that's been earmarked to go directly to them, but this is where you wouldn't want any nuances to disrupt that. So, it would be a, a situation of, like I said the other day, a microscope on it, to make sure it's going to that. Go back to my previous warning, I don't think in the next few years that that, it'll be enough. So, this is where I think the long-term planning needs to, to be coupled with that, that you're still looking at cost cuts, even if you get this. You still need to take a hard look at a lot of things, because, again, I don't think cost of living will go down, and I would want to have plans in place when it's not enough. Because the percent increase of pay that's going to happen... Because the percent increase of pay that's going to happen, I don't think will keep up with inflation and other things that are in play right now, so it won't be enough. So what's the option after that?
Thank you. Kenny, you're next.
So I 100% support the mill levy override. I guess I have a little bit of a difference of opinion with Chase on this. I do feel like we have exhausted our ways of looking at this. We, as a state, have recently eliminated the Gallagher proposal, which allowed us to have a little bit more money towards our schools, but as a state, we are somewhere in the bottom five of states in funding for education. And so we are not receiving the dollars from the state that we need to adequately do what we need to retain, recruit, and keep high qualified, high-quality teachers in our district. So we need to make sure that we are doing something to do that. Our cost of living, as we said, it is high. It's the third highest in the state, according for our district, and yet we are paying our teachers at a rate of somewhere in the, around 37th in the state. So I believe this pay increase would make a tremendous difference. It is somewhere in the neighborhood, I believe, at $10,000 to $12,000, and with that type of pay increase, that will help with housing, that will help with childcare, it will help with all the other things that make it difficult for somebody to get hired in this district and then stay in the district. We offer jobs to teachers and they get turned down and turned down and turned down again and again and again when they look at the cost of living here. So I think it is essential and pertinent that we do pass this to give teachers part of what they deserve, but give them an extra step to be able to get in the door and then at that point, hopefully have a long time in their career here in the district.
Thank you. Kathryn, you're next.
I'm fully in support of the mill levy. I think we all know that teachers don't get into teaching for pay, and what this will do is really just allow our teachers to live. Based on my research, we're 47th out of 50 in our state per pupil funding. So it's incredibly low, it's not enough. You know, the state has been sued over inadequately funding education. Unfortunately, they lost that suit, and other states, those suits have won. But there's an issue at the state level in funding, and so we need to do what we can locally to make up for it. We are the only district out of our neighboring districts that are this low in our mil funds, and this will max it out. And while I hear Chase's concerns of this not being enough, we also have to remember that this is tied to property tax values. So as the cost of living increases, as our property values go up, we'll be bringing in more money, which can hopefully offset some of that. I think that, you know, I applaud the district for bringing it this year. I know it's, it's tough because we're, we're on the heels of COVID. Everybody's still kind of reeling from that. But we're at a point in time, we're at a critical juncture, where we need to do something to be able to attract and retain teachers and staff. We can't forget about the staff because I really think that they are one of the most important pieces in keeping our schools functioning, and I know that that is a very difficult area right now in keeping staff, retaining staff, even hiring staff. Those are the people that our kids are with day in and day out too, that care for our kids, that take care of all the little things that we aren't there to take care of. So I, yeah, 100% in support of the mill levy. I think that if we don't pass it, it will be very difficult to overcome.
Thank you. Our next question is about equity, inclusion, and belonging. Our district is made up of a diverse mix of Latino and Anglo, new residents, and longtime multi-generational families. How would you like to see the district support students and families from all racial and socioeconomic backgrounds? Kenny, you're first.
I think it is very important for us as a district to look at who our population is and make sure that we are meeting the needs of the entire population. We have very different needs on how we need to meet the needs of our Latino population and our Anglo population. One of those ways is making sure that we are making steps that will bring the Latino families into our schools and into our environments and into our meetings. I think this is a perfect example, if we look at this meeting and who is here tonight, we do not have a 55% representation of Latino families and Latino people sitting in the audience right now. We need to do something better to bring them into our school mix. If we're looking at how achievement happens, we also need to compare scores of our Anglos versus our Latinos. Currently, there's a big disparity in our learning gap, we have a big learning gap and a big disparity in achievement in our district. If you look at our Anglos right now, according to the last state testing, that was a full state testing in 2019 in CMAS, our Anglo population is on par with what has happened in Aspen, and we're doing better than RE2, Eagle, Summit, Cherry Creek. We're doing better than the state average for our Anglo students. For our Latino students, we are doing much worse. We have a 40-point disparity gap in between the achievement of our Anglo students and our Latino students. We need to offer programming that will allow people who come to our district with no English, who come to kindergarten not speaking English, to give them a different type of programming that will allow them to develop their oral English. They need to learn English, but at the same time as they're learning English, they need to learn academics. Because we can't wait a couple of years until, oh, they learn English, but now they're behind academically. And so we have some great programming happening right now in Basalt and the bilingual program up there, GSES, Riverview, they're doing different things at these schools and offering things such as the seal of illiteracy. So I think those are things that we can address this needs.
Thank you. Kathryn, you're next.
Sure. So this is obviously a tough issue. It's, it's tough because it's balancing, and we have to balance the needs of different groups of people. And it's important that while we're balancing the needs, we are also supporting both. We're not, you know, putting more attention on one over the other. And so this is, when you're talking to the community, this is what you hear from people a lot. You hear issues surrounding the way that the district is handling this. And I agree with what a lot of Kenny said, you know, we need to support all of the students in our district, and we need to figure out by looking at other districts, by looking at the best and most recent and up-to-date research on dual language and on different methods of curriculum, and figuring out how are we going to challenge all students? How are we going to do our job at educating all students? And how are we going to provide the additional support that some of our students need? And students coming in without any English do need additional support. My daughter's in the dual-language program at Basalt Elementary, and I have been nothing but pleased with it. I think that Basalt Elementary is doing a wonderful job of striking that balance in their dual-language classes. She is in a very diverse class, she's being taught in both English and in Spanish, alternating a wonderful team of teachers, and as a first grader, has incorporated a lot of Spanish already into her language. I can't speak from the perspective of a Latino parent, but I'm assuming that the same is happening on the other side. So again, this is tough, but it's really listening to our community, but ultimately, what are the needs of our students? Because that's who we're here to serve and figuring out how to best meet those needs.
Thank you. Chase?
Yeah, I, I agree with both Kenny and Kathryn. I think this goes back to regardless of socioeconomic, generational, racial background, I think this comes down to, in whatever capacity you can, is encouraging parental involvement. I mean, I think that transcends, and obviously it is, it's a hot button to talk about things when it comes to race, and it's, I'm sure everybody feels uncomfortable having to even answer questions related to it, because you don't want to say the wrong thing. This is where I just view it holistically, it's, I think that you're looking for underlying principles. How, how can you get parents more involved? That's the most important thing, at least in my view, in a proper education. I don't think it stops within these walls, the other school, the schools around here, the walls there. I think the education continues with parents, and I think that's an important thing, is getting them involved. Like Kenny said, how, how can you encourage them to come here from the Latino community? And I don't think it's an easy, simple fix. I think as far as ways to address it, I think the first thing would be, we're talking about performance of this, this demographic compared to others, so I think it would be, the first question would just be, based on performance, what have we been doing for the last two, three years that's, that's led to this? What are things that could be changed? So I think that would be the first thing, is just identifying what's done, because whether it's on the right track or not, you'd want to probably adjust what you've been doing. Otherwise, it's the definition of insanity.
Thank you. And I will say that we are live streaming this event, and we have live translating going on, English to Spanish, so thank you to the district for that. Okay, next up is management of COVID. Chase, then Kathryn. What should the district's priorities be in managing COVID?
I think the, the priorities are obviously health and keeping schools open. I think what we've probably learned the last, we're in month 18 of, of dealing with this, 19? I think the, I would like to see a more, probably, a lot of things go back to transparency, is just more communication with families on things that are going to happen. And I do factor, and I know a lot of discussion happens around mental health. I mean, obviously, this has been a tough time for everybody, especially kids, their development. You look at CDC, the emergency room visits for mental health issues, I mean, those have skyrocketed in the same period of time. So I do think, it's maybe an oxymoron, priorities versus holistic approach, but I do think taking a holistic approach of how policies can impact everything. That would be my biggest thing, is just wanting to look at all the different things, because you, you hear about unintended consequences. You're going to address one thing and then you create a bigger problem over here. I think there's certain things that taking a holistic approach goes back to communication, transparency with families, talking to kids in a candid way. I mean, I try and identify those things rather than just being solely focused on the, the direct, the direct health. Because, yeah, you can address that, you can take care of that, but you open up a whole, a whole nother bunch of problems that can come from that. So again, kind of an oxymoron, but I would say a holistic approach and just communicate with families.
Great, thank you. Kathryn, you're next.
Sure. I think the district has two main priorities, keeping kids in school and keeping kids safe. You know, running a school through the last 18 months, it's been grueling. No matter what decision you made, some parents were happy and some parents were not, because we're in the middle of a global pandemic and none of us have ever been here before. And there's no one telling you that this is the right decision to make or this is the wrong decision to make. There are people on both sides at every step of the way. So it's tough, it's a tough role to be in. I think that what I have said consistently regarding COVID protocols is that we need to trust the public health officials. I know that as a school administrator, if I weren't doing everything that someone told me to do to keep the kids safe, and a kid, God forbid, got very sick under my watch, I would never be able to sleep at night or live with myself, because my primary role is to keep these kids safe day in and day out. The mental health piece is huge, and keeping kids in school is huge for the mental health piece. When kids are in school, they're happier, they're learning better, parents have less stress, and so if keeping kids in school means that we need to mask to avoid, avoid quarantines, then we need to do that. You know, I compare it sometimes to, I don't go to, you know, a butcher to like get my taxes done, right? I go to an accountant. I'm not a public health official. I don't want to be responsible for making these types of determinations for kids in regard to what the health and safety standards should be. I'm going to entrust that to someone who has that training and expertise. And be it right or wrong, history will tell, but I'm not in the position to make that call.
Thank you. Kenny?
I am in agreement with Kathryn in that we need to trust the experts on this subject. We need to turn to the CDC for their guidance, we need to turn to the Colorado Department of Health for their guidance, and I also agree that the main goal is safety, health, and I think it's an in-person learning. And I think in the school district's management plan and what they have, their first line of their response to COVID says, "Our goal for responding to the pandemic this year is to strive to return to normal while prioritizing health, safety, and in-person learning." And I agree also that if masks are what is necessary for in-person learning, that is the number one thing that we need to do. Nobody likes to wear a mask, we would all rather not have them, but if we're able to reduce the quarantining that we're needing to do, and we are still having this in-person learning, everybody who has children realizes what a difficult time that was with online learning last year, and we saw the results of how it affected certain populations more than other populations. It is essential that we do have that in-person learning. So I would also just say that that is something that we need to support, and I think that the district has criteria that are outlined in the plan, on when it will be okay, that are specific and measurable, on when to get rid of masking, and I think that's, plan this in place that I support.
Thank you. So now we're at concluding statements. That went by really fast.
Did we skip for a time or did we just?
We skipped a couple of questions because we're running out of time. Yes, sorry. We're at concluding statements, so Kathryn, you're going to go first. Please tell us how you will help the board become more effective and add any parting thoughts about why you're the best candidate for the board.
So, you know, this really just circles back to where we started. I think that my broad experience across a number of different industries and career paths, which at the time felt a little hectic to me personally, have added up to putting me in a pretty good position to serve the board well. I think that I bring multiple perspectives, you know, of a business owner, of a parent, of a lawyer, of an educator. I've served in all of those roles, and I think that that can be beneficial to the board. I think another thing that's super important in this role is showing a commitment not just to public education, but to our district, and I think that my personal life shows that. This is a volunteer role, so we all throw our hats into the ring voluntarily and agree to give up hours of our time and spend, you know, a significant amount of time on this. And just sitting here and being in these events, you can tell that, that we've done that. And I think that my career path also shows that. So I'm willing to go all in, and I do go all in on what I do. If I'm going to do something, I do it well. And so I think that I can commit to doing that, to being available, to thoroughly reading board packets and attending and being there 100% every other week. And I think that that's an important thing to, to think about as a voter, which candidates can do that and which candidates have shown that they are willing to do that. So I, you know, ask for your vote this fall. I would love to serve our children in this way in our district.
Thank you. Kenny, you're next.
So I have spent my life committed to education, that has been my life, and I don't feel like I am ready to be done with that yet at this point. I haven't recently retired, I do have time to devote myself to this, this role. I, I retired from teaching because the day-to-day, the consumption of your life that it takes to be a teacher was too much for me to continue at this point. I was ready to move beyond that, but I do have the dedication, the gumption to continue in a role where I look at it as a volunteer role, and I'm very happy that it's a, a role that I get to do voluntarily and I get to do it on my time, and that is one thing that I do have. And so I want to continue to do that. I think I am uniquely situated to be able to do this with the experience I bring from having taught all these years. We know that it all comes down to the kids' learning. That is our number one goal, is make sure that the kids are learning and that they're healthy and that they're emotionally stable. And I think that comes from a lot to do with parents and how parents set them up to be able to do that, but it also comes a lot from the teachers, and I understand that perspective. I understand the strains that goes into teaching, and I understand how the teachers is the key to be enabled, and the entire staff actually, is the key to be enabled to make sure that children are succeeding at a high level. And I believe I have insights to be able to see how that's working and to be able to bring those insights to the board position where I can help guide the board in what is necessary to make sure we are doing the best for our kids. And I'll be able to do that from a parent perspective, from a teaching perspective, and from a career in education, and I'm very excited to be able to have this opportunity. I feel like I will be a good bridge to the entire community, and I really hope that you will look at us closely, and I hope that you would support me in my quest. So thank you.
Thank you. Chase?
Yeah, as a, as a board member, should I get enough votes to, to be on the board? I think, I think it comes down to looking at this whole, as, as a, a board function in general, and I think this is where things can get lost in something when it comes to education, and I, I reference the, the corporate world. Would you have JP Morgan's board being all former bankers? Would you have JP Morgan's board being all former bankers? Or all people connected to the banking industry? You want different perspectives, because if you get into your own world too much, you, you miss some things. And I think this is where, looking at these topics, I mean, we're talking about pay and staffing crisis. It's like, you go up and down the valley to small businesses, everybody's dealing with it. We've got friends that own a business, they lose someone every two weeks. They can't keep anybody. So this is where it's just, it's not to say that you just brush it aside and forget the problems, I'm just saying it's the perspective of, there's a lot of things that are maybe going on in our district that I don't think are necessarily unique as an organization. So that would be one thing, is just a different perspective in how are other industries tackling some of these problems? And again, you look at other things, managing COVID, a lot of businesses have to deal with that. Improving efficiencies when it comes to operations, every business, every operation, every company, organizations trying to deal with that. So I think the biggest thing is, looking at a properly functioning board is historically about having different perspectives. You want to get the insights from different industry leaders so that you can have different perspectives to come to a consensus. Maybe not everybody agrees, but you're at least getting multiple different viewpoints rather than kind of the standard narrative that you might be getting back and forth, the, the echo chamber problem. So I think that's, that's the reason that I would, would ask for your vote, is a different perspective, but understanding how, how boards function.
Great, thank you. Perfect timing. Thank you, everyone. Thanks for joining us this evening. Thanks to our candidates, thanks to our hosts and our community for joining us tonight. Remember to vote. Thank you.
Thank you.